The webinar is now live, Madam Chair.
Great, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Planning Board meeting for Tuesday, December 8th, 2020, hosted via Zoom. If you're participating in this webinar, we will allow a public comment during the public hearings via raising your hand in the chat section or messaging us on the chat. So we'll monitor that throughout the meeting and we will allow presenters to be panelists at the appropriate time as well. So the first public hearing does not start until 6:15. So between now and then, we're going to go over some old and new business. First, I'm just going to take a roll call vote of the members that are present. Member Baker.
Present.
Member McCamey.
Here.
Member Downey.
Here.
And member Grove. Member Grove is muted, but I do see, do see him here.
He's here.
Yeah, great. And then just a note that member Grove was an alternate member and has been promoted to full-time member. So he will be joining us as a full-time member of the board. While we await for a potential alternate member appointed by Town Council. The first item of business on old new business is I'm going to take the Planning Board meeting minutes from August 11th, 2020. If members have had a chance to review, if you have any comments, please let us know. Otherwise, chair will entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
So moved.
A motion to approve minutes by member McCamey. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by member Downey. I'll do a roll call vote. Member McCamey.
Yes.
Member Baker.
Yes.
Member Downey.
Yes.
Member Grove.
Yes.
And Chair, Chair, yes. The second item of old new business is the December zoning board of appeal recommendations. Those are available online. If anybody would wish to review the applications, the plans and applications are online. We have a summary of, of the three projects on the agenda. If anybody from the board would like to address them, any of them individually or has I guess if we want to address them individually, we can, we have been doing that recently in the past at the request of member Grove. So if that's still, still what we want to do, we can do that.
Yeah, I agree with number Grove. Let's go item by item if we could.
All right, all right. So the first, the first petition is petition 20-2944 Tingley Road. If I could just ask our staff, Connor, if you could please just kind of give a, give a just an overview and your recommendation for the board. And then we'll see if, if any of the members have comments after that.
Absolutely. So petition 20-2944 Tingley Road. Description, the applicant is proposing constructing 18 by 12, single story addition with a four by eight rear deck. The applicant seeks a finding to alter the non-conforming rear yard setback from 20 feet to 8.85 feet. I would like to note, this is a corner lot and they are subject to two front yards. The staff recommendation, the applicant is proposing a modest addition to the single family home. I would like to note in 2016, the applicant demolished an existing rear deck within the same location and setbacks as a proposed single story addition. Staff recommends favorable action pending zoning board appeals input.
All right, thank you, Connor. And just as a reminder to any of the public that's joining in for the zoning board of, for the zoning board of appeals applications, the planning board's role is to give a recommendation with the support of staff recommendation. So we review the applications and provide, provide input to the ZBA. But ultimately, the decision on these applications falls with the zoning board of appeals. So with that said, does any members of the board have comments or questions regarding this application? I'll start with member McCamey.
No, no comments.
All right, great. Member Baker.
Just for clarification, Connor, the new proposed home office addition is that in the exact same footprint as the deck that was just approved a couple of years back?
Um, I can either confirm or deny that. The, I sort of been working with this applicant for the past several months. They finally put together their application and such. They had an existing plot plan prepared in 2016 when they made improvements to the garage basement and the dwelling. So that 2016 plot plan, which I'm sure you reviewed online, doesn't have the rear yard setback dimensions. Unfortunately, I couldn't print and scale it. So it is within roughly the same location as what they're proposing currently.
Okay, so when they first got approved in 16, that they
That was existing non-conforming, member Baker. It was never, I, I can't tell if it was approved through the ZBA.
Oh, I see. Okay, that's how, that's how I was getting that. Okay, got it. So it looks like the deck's just existing and they're almost, looks like they're almost in feeling it.
Right, just for
And just, just more of a point of clarification.
Right, just, just another point of clarification. They demolished that deck, so they lost any protections they have in that setback.
Oh, they did, okay.
Yep.
Got it. All right, yeah, no more questions for me.
All right, thank you. Member Downey, any comments or questions?
No, none for me.
Member Grove, any questions or comments?
My only problem with this is the proximity to the, the next door neighbor. This is going to put them in close proximity. I, I don't, I don't like encroaching on things that much. I'm afraid I'm opposed to it because of down the road, if the other person, you know, if ownership changes or the other person comes in and somebody gives them a hard time, I don't think that's appropriate. I don't think the first person in the door should be the one to get any relief.
All right, member Grove, would you want to possibly add to the recommendation that they get a butter support or do you feel like?
Our butter support only lasts as long as you hold title.
Sure, okay, that's fine. All right, so with regards to 44 Tingley Road, I don't have any questions or comments, Connor, but I guess with regards to this application, I'm sure I'll entertain a motion for it. If anybody wants to make a motion.
Not hearing anybody else. I'll make a motion to oppose it. Recommend denial.
We have a motion for denial. Does anyone second that motion? Um, can I ask a point of clarification for staff? If we have a motion that is denied without a second, do we, would we, how, what would be the next step for that?
Motion fails, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Do we have to make another, we have to make another motion then?
Correct, yes.
All right.
Or send it the way it is. Without a recommendation.
Yeah, I'd be more in favor of sending without a recommendation myself.
So no, no recommendation on this one? So we have a motion for no recommendation for 44 Tingley Road?
I have a
I don't think you even need a motion for that.
Right.
Yeah, they should.
It would be appreciated if there was a motion to not provide a recommendation.
I'll take a motion, not provide a recommendation. Thank you.
All right, we have a motion, we have a motion to not provide a recommendation. Do I have, by member Baker, do we have a second?
I will second that motion.
A second by member Downey. All right, so we'll do a roll call vote. Member McCamey.
Yes.
Member Baker.
Yes.
Member Downey.
Yes.
Member Grove.
No.
You're, you're no on the no recommendation.
Right. Correct.
Okay, and myself will be, yes. All right, thank you. Um, let's see what time is it? Okay, let's, let's move on to the next petition, ZBA petition 20-3160 Albee Drive.
60 Albee Drive. The applicant is looking to construct a 900 square foot pool and 2,390 square feet of walkways, decking and patio. The proposed improvements will result in an increase in the site's lock coverage from 18.1% to 26.7%. 20% is the maximum lock coverage allowed. And they are looking to decrease the site's open space from 81.9% to 73.3%. 8% minimum is allowed. The applicant seeks variance. Staff recommends denial as the applicant has presented hardships, however, they are not concurrent with the lock coverage increase.
All right. Member McCamey, any comments or questions?
Um, excuse me, I'd agree with staff on this one.
All right, great. Member Baker.
Yeah, I'm going to agree to follow the department, what they say.
All right, great. Member Downey?
I have no comments. I'm happy with what the staff said.
Great, thank you. Member Baker, member Grove.
Cause I agree with staff. That's a live pool.
All right. I do not have any further comments or questions, so it sounds like Chair will entertain a motion to go with the staff recommendation of denial for 60 Albee Drive petition 2031.
We'll make that motion to support the staff recommendation.
All right, so we have a motion by member McCamey and a second by, was it member Baker or Downey?
Downey.
Downey. All right, a second by member Downey. Roll call vote, member McCamey.
Yes.
Member Baker.
Yes.
Member Downey.
Yes.
Member Grove.
Yes.
And myself, yes. The third petition on the ZBA's agenda is petition 20-32290 Hayward Street.
Uh, the applicant is looking to construct a 16 by 16, 256 square foot deck to the non-conforming single family dwelling. The applicant seeks a finding as a proposed deck will have a rear yard setback of 14.3 feet, while the non-conforming single family dwelling has a rear yard setback of nine feet, where 30 feet is required in a residence B zone. Staff recommends favorable action on the petition as submitted.
Member McCamey, do you have any questions or comments?
No comments.
Baker.
I'm in favor of the staff recommendation since it's not getting any worse than what's currently there. It's actually getting better than what the current house is. So I'm in favor of the board recommendation.
Member Downey, do you have any comments or questions?
None.
Member Grove, do you have any comments or questions?
I'm thinking about it.
Um.
Okay. Connor.
Yes, sir.
Since the pool is going behind the house.
It, sir, it's, it's a, it's a deck. It's not a pool, sir.
That's, I'm sorry.
290 Hayward. So 290 Hayward sits on a corner lot. And the house as it sits today is not conforming with respect to the rear and side yard setback.
Right.
Really, the way the house is situated, depending where they want to go, they're, they're going to be
It's, it's so deep in the lot. Yep.
Correct, yeah, so.
I was just pulling up a map. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
All right, I don't have any questions or comments. So with that, I'll entertain a motion for, for this petition 290 Hayward Street, if anybody would like to make one.
I'll move for to support the staff's recommendation.
All right, so we have a motion to support staff recommendation on 290 Hayward Street by member McCamey. Do we have a second?
Second, Downey.
We have a second by member Downey. So roll call vote, member McCamey.
Yes.
Member Baker.
Yes.
Member Downey.
Yes.
Member Grove.
Yes.
And I myself am also, yes.
Thank you.
I think those are the only two items on old new business. And the first public hearing starts at 6:15, which it is essentially 6:15. I just wanted to also note that any questions that might be had by the public that you are unable to enter into the chat or be recognized for whatever reason via Zoom on the meeting, you are able to email Connor at the town, at his town email address, which is crmurphy@braintreeMA.gov. We're going to put that in the chat in case anybody can see that. But if you have any questions during the meeting or any issues accessing, please reach out via email to crmurphy@braintreeMA.gov. So with that, we are going to start the public hearing for 62 Park Avenue, PB file number 20-07, and I will be recusing myself from this matter. And member McCamey or member Baker will be taking over.
Okay. So we're going to open up the 62 Park Avenue Planning Bill, Planning Board File Number 2007. Is there anything in correspondence we should be bringing in, Melissa?
In regards We do have correspondence, Mr., Mr. Chairman. What I'd like, if you could, if you have the public hearing notice, um, that was emailed out a while back. If you could open the hearing by reading that, if you don't have it easily accessible, I can read that for you.
Yeah, I don't have it accessible to me right now.
Okay, I'll read that right now and then, then we can open up the hearing.
Okay, appreciate it.
And again, this is a grading permit for 62 Park Avenue. Notice is given by the Planning Board under the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 48, Section 11, and the Braintree zoning by law, Chapter 135, Articles 5, 7, 11 and 12, that a public hearing will be conducted remotely via Zoom on Tuesday, December 8th at 6:15 PM, in accordance with Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order. Said order suspended the provisions of the open meeting law to promote public health and social distancing. This public hearing will, will not be conducted in an open, publicly accessible place. Instead, public access to the hearing and deliberations will be achieved by adequate alternate means that allows the public to follow the proceedings and a third-party communication technology that is readily accessible to the public via the internet and the telephone. Planning Board will consider a grading permit from the applicants, Mark Deslavic and Karen Goran. The applicants are proposing to undertake grading in their rear yard associated with the construction of an in-ground pool. The grading involves retaining walls up to 5.6 feet in height and the removal of approximately 225 cubic yards of fill. The site is 15,773 square feet, has an address of 62 Park Avenue and is zoned Residence B watershed and as identified on assessors plan 1075 as plot 4A. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. So now we'd like to open that hearing up. And as I said, Melissa, is any correspondence we could bring in for this topic for 65 Park Avenue?
Uh, we do have a correspondence list, Mr. Chairman, items one through 11. That was transmitted to the board, I believe, via email yesterday or today from Louise. And we also have for discussion and consideration this evening, after the presentation, a staff report as well as some draft conditions. I'm sure Michael Joyce, engineer for the applicant, will get into the details. But he has submitted a revised plan that was also shared with the board that is dated 10/28. Nope, I'm sorry. That is dated, the latest set of revisions is dated December 7th. And I have reviewed that plan and it addresses all of the comments in the staff report.
Okay, great. Any more thoughts from Melissa and your board or should I move it to the applicant at this time?
Uh, no, I don't have anything to add at this time, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
All right, I'll move it over to the applicant if they want to speak on this behalf.
Hi, my name's Michael Joyce with Joyce Consulting Group. Civil engineer for the project with me or the, well, not with me, but virtually here are the owners, Mark Deskalovich and Karen Garen. Should I share my screen or how, how do you want me to present the plan? What would be the best way to do that?
Yeah, you can do that.
Okay, I was going to shoot, put up the proposed site plan.
Perfect, Connor just enabled that.
All right, great.
Mr. Joyce, thank you.
So it's an existing single family home on a 15,000 square foot lot. Currently, I got a it's an aerial photo for you. So it's on Park, Park Avenue as a grassed yard in the rear. This, the yard slopes pretty significantly from the eastern side to the northwestern side. The majority of the slope is kind of this mulched area you can see in the aerial image. So what the applicant is proposing to do is to construct a pool. The applicant had been in front of the Conservation Commission due to the presence of wetlands in the rear of the property. They received a negative determination of applicability. As part of that determination, they were required to plant 12 shrubs along the rear fence. There's an existing fence here. There'll be 12 shrubs there that are from the native shrubs for wetland buffer zone planting. Those will be planted as part of the project. And the reason we're here tonight is, as I said, the yard slopes fairly significantly from the eastern side to the western, northwestern side. As a result of that, in order to level the, the rear lot, we're proposing to construct a retaining wall along the side here. There'll be approximately six feet in height, a little under six feet, and then level out the rear yard and put the proposed pool in that area. The area of shading on the, on the plan is approximately the area of the proposed grading. It's really pretty straightforward. There'll be a set of stairs to access the, the pool area from the side yard. The rear yard will be surrounded in fencing. That's really kind of the extent of the project. The proposed pool will have a patio around the size of it and it will be 10 feet off the property line. With that, I'd like to open it up to any questions from the board, unless you have, have any questions now.
Thank you, Mr. Joyce. Yeah, if we can open it up to the public, is anyone here raising their hand, Melissa, in regards to this project?
Sorry, I was muted that whole time. Um, there is no hands raised. And there's nothing in the chat at this time, Mr. Chairman, from the public.
There's no, no letters or refuse or anything coming into you?
Nothing, nothing, nope.
All right, I'll open up to members of my board. Member Downey, any questions or comments?
No, I don't, I don't have any comments at this time of question. Thank you.
Okay. Member McCamey, any questions?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Excuse me. The, the area on, on the right-hand side, which I think Mr. Joyce described as kind of a mulch area. So, so that area has, has never been developed and currently just has a slope.
Yeah, correct. It's, it's, it drops about four feet in a distance of about 20 feet. So it's kind of a, that's the sloped area of the site. I think it may, it's mulched. We surveyed it in the fall, so there may be seasonal plantings there. I don't know. But it's not really utilized for anything at the current time.
Okay. And so then it's your opinion. It should be fairly easy to put a retaining wall in. It looks like it's going to be approximately six feet in height.
Yep, so the retain will be about four feet off the property line and about six feet tall. The proposed wall will be a block wall, like a techno block, so it won't need a, a deep foundation. The foundation will be about a foot deep or one block, one course deep typically in those. So there shouldn't be an issue in installing the, the retaining wall.
Okay, and since I'm not familiar with the technique, I assume you're going to build the wall first and then do you bring in the fill? I, I mean, and versus constructing, you know, the perimeter of the pool and fill around it. Do you bring in the fill totally and then dig it back out? How does that go?
Yeah, so on this site, it's, I should have mentioned that it's a net cut site. So they'll probably remove a significant amount of the soil and then construct the wall. They may need to bring some, some soil in kind of as a, as a base for the patio area. But for the most part, there really won't be much soil coming into the site. It'll be being removed. So that initially they'll remove, I would, I would think the majority of the, the soil they need to remove, construct the wall. Then they would construct the pool and build the patio around the pool.
Okay, and then, and then use their existing soil to fill in.
Yeah, if necessary, yeah.
Yeah, okay, I got you. And then what I'm looking at here is I see you have the retaining wall and then the pool. What's going to be between the pool and the retaining wall?
So there'll be, there'll be patio area in this area here. There's about a six-foot patio area. I'm not sure if that's concrete or pavers. The, the owners could probably answer that question.
Okay, so, so then the patio butts directly to the wall and is that a pretty typical design?
Yeah, I would say it's, yeah, I would say so.
Yeah, okay, so it doesn't weaken at all, at all, or?
No, no, I wouldn't think so.
Yeah, okay, so I mean, the design looks good. I mean, obviously the challenge is the elevations. Conservation's having you put in some shrubs, so I mean, other than that, it looks, it looks pretty typical type project, in my opinion. So, uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mayor McCamey. Uh, member Grove, any comments?
Mr. Joyce. Do you know if the, the wall is going to have any hydraulic release so that water doesn't build up behind it or?
I'm not sure if there'll be weep holes installed. Typically, we don't, do not design the wall. It is going to be an open face grid block. So I'd imagine that there will be, if necessary, released through the the rear, the, the seams of the
Well, the reason I'm asking is I think it'd be preferable not to be dumping the water onto the neighbor's property and probably flushing it down along the walls to the backside of, of your property.
Well, so, yeah, so we are, we are the low side of the wall. So if there were weeping through the wall would be coming to our property.
George, okay.
Yep.
Yeah, cause everything else is, okay.
Any other questions, member Grove?
No, thank you.
Yeah, the only question I have myself is, is the distance from house to proposed patio and pool? What's going to be happening? Is just going to be green space? Is it larger patio? I know this says proposed patio around the pool, but is there more patio from the end of that concrete pad where the stairs come down from the back of the house to where the, the proposed patio actually starts or what's going on in that, that gap?
To my knowledge, it's going to be all grass. I'm not sure if the applicant, they're on the call as well. Space, yeah.
Yeah, that's correct. Only the, the, the current purpose patio is the apron around the pool and everything else will be grass as it currently is.
Okay, and any, any consideration made as I know the wall is, is fairly large, six feet, it's a, you know, fairly tall wall of, is four feet enough? So you're not walking on your neighbor's property if you did have any sort of, you know, shrubbery or something up there to maintain or is just going to be mulched and kind of not thought about again? I'm just thinking of if someone has to service above the wall or something for landscaping or whatnot. Is there any consideration to make that a, a larger than a four-foot kind of walkway, so to speak?
Um, I mean, the, the idea I had was to actually plant some shrubs, other plants in this area right next to, to basically the property line and the fence.
Okay, cause, cause you think we'd, Michael, do you think we'd, Mr. Joyce, have a, a consideration to put some sort of railing on top of that? So there's for a safety thing?
That's addressed in the conditions, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, I'm just thinking just know for safety, just having that, that kind of fall over, so. Uh, that's pretty much it for me. Everything else looks okay. I was just curious of that kind of spacing. I was just curious of that kind of spacing between. If it's just going to be grass, at least it'll beautify the area from house to patio. So no more questions on my, any any members of the board, anything else you want to add or? If not.
I would just mention, Mr. Chairman, has the applicant and their engineer reviewed the draft conditions?
We have. I don't know. They forwarded them onto the applicants. I did look at them and I didn't think there was anything anything unusual or?
Okay. So if we're okay with that, do you do someone make a motion?
Mr. Chairman, just to remind the board, we need three motions here. One to accept the correspondence, one to close the hearing, and then one to actually weigh in on the on the petition.
Okay, so I'll take a motion to bring in the correspondence.
That's so moved by Downey.
Here a second.
Second.
All in favor, roll call vote, Member McCamey?
Yes.
Member Downey?
Yes.
Member Grove?
Yes.
And myself, yes. And then a second was to close the close the hearing, Melissa?
Ah, yes, please.
So take a motion to close the hearing?
So moved by Downey.
Second, my group. So all in favor, Member McCamey?
Yes.
Member Grove?
Yes.
Member Downey?
Yes.
And myself, yes. And then the last item, take a motion for this meeting agenda item?
Mr. Chairman, this is Member Downey. The grading permit, put a motion in at the grading permit. It's planning board file twenty zero seven. Be approved as subject to the conditions discussed at this meeting.
All right, roll call vote, Mayor McCamey?
Yes.
Member Grove?
Yes.
Member Downey?
Yes.
And myself, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yep, thank you.
Is Aaron back on for the next one or am I taking the next one as well, Melissa?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, she's recusing herself from forty-five Johnson Lane as well. You'll be chairing this one as well. Just before we get into the matters here, I just want to let the board know. I did issue a staff report and draft conditions that went out to the board. I did spend some time reviewing those and speaking with Attorney Goldstein today. He had some comments. Those comments were forwarded onto the board along with the minor revisions that I made to the conditions. Those are all highlighted in red. I do not think that any of those revisions impact the conditions from a meaning standpoint. Just more of a clarification. Attorney Goldstein is is not familiar with all of our conditions and was just wanted some verbiage updated to eliminate any misinterpretation of how we apply those conditions. So we do have updated again draft conditions. They were revised today. They're the ones that say revised on December eighth in red. And then also forwarded along Mr. Goldstein's Attorney Goldstein's email with the items that he had raised. And you'll be able to see how they've been addressed in the in the conditions. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. So I'll open this public hearing forty-five Johnson Lane, planning board file number twenty zero three for a special permanent site plan review. Park of Global Industries is the applicant. Is anything I need to do on my end, Melissa? I don't have that email in front of me to open this as well.
This is already opened, so we don't have to read the notice. Yep.
So I'll turn it over to the applicant.
Great. Good evening, everybody. Ken Goldstein from the Brookline Law Firm, Goldstein in Erden. And I represent the applicant, Parker Global Industries. Just to refresh your recollection, Parker Global is the proposed buyer of the property. But we do this with the cooperation of the owner, Forty-Five Braintree LLC. With me tonight is Richard Livingston. Richard, wave your hand. Alan Livingston, Richard Nolan, of the two local owners of this Johnstone Stone Supply location. Johnstone Supply, as you may know, is a a national cooperative. Just the way Ocean Spray is a cooperative for cranberries. Johnstone is a cooperative for property equipment, mostly HVAC equipment. With me also is architect Jonathan Austin. Jonathan, raise your hand. And engineer Terry Tolosko from Bristol Engineering. I want to thank staff immensely. We've had a very productive meeting with Christine Stickney. And she had very valuable input for us. I think this is a better project as a result of Christine's input. And Melissa and Tucci was just terrific today. And going through the working through the conditions with me. And I think we've arrived at a project that that the applicant can live with. And we're hopeful will be an improvement and enhancement to the to the neighborhood and to into the town in general. So without further ado, I'd like to ask my favorite engineer, Jonathan Austin, if he would just walk us through the changes that were made. Which, by the way, I should mention, you know, the the stress points on this project were parking versus drainage. And I think what we've done is achieved a balance between those two. Jonathan? Jonathan, you're muted. Jonathan? You're muted.
Oh, hi. Good evening, everybody. Actually, I'm the architect. I'm going to hand it to my favorite engineer, which is Terry Tolosko.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, everybody.
Who'll share the plan?
Can I share the screen?
Give me one second, Terry. Oh, there you go.
Not hearing him.
Okay, so what you're seeing is an evolution of a few few different concepts. And this is this is what we had arrived with with Christine to, in effect, mimic a lot of what happens on the thirty-five Johnson Lane. To continue that certain street edge. Few different landscaping islands. And in order to be able to fit the parking to accommodate the 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 number of parking spaces, we we developed this this scheme with the twenty-four-foot drive aisles and the in the stalls perpendicular to the building with the landscaped islands border bordering Roxanne Park Road with some parking adjacent to the building for the southern part of the site. As far as drainage improvements, we have included a there was some concern about drainage coming down John's Johnson Lane and coming onto the site and then heading over toward this existing catch basin down here. So we have intercepted that with a swale that drains to a catch basin. And that catch basin will be connected to the drain system in Johnson Lane. And this will also connect the roof drainage. So there's a couple roof leaders on the east side of the building. There we go. New manhole to connect into the Johnson Lane side of the of the site. On the northern side of the site, the drainage is very similar in that we are going to pick up the roof drainage on the west side of the site and pipe it into the Roxanne side of the building or the Roxanne Park drainage system. So when when we had the survey done, this this system is is sediment, so along the the leg of drainage adjacent to the site, we will be cleaning that. We'll flush it and and clean it from these catch basins on on either end of the site to facilitate this this connection. So that's and then we we added in these these landscaped islands. There'll be some curbing around them. There'll be some signage. There's a handicap ramp on the west side along with a we're going to plant some grass here with ADA accessible walkway to the to the back door here and to the end of the front door. So that's essentially the changes from what you had seen from the prior plan. Jonathan, I don't know if there's anything you want to add to that?
Nope, you've covered it very well. Thank you.
With that, we are open to questions from the board.
Okay, thank you very much. Is anyone raising their hand in the public, Melissa, that you see?
Let me take a look, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
I don't see any hands raised at this point from the attendees. And there are no questions in the chat.
Okay, great. So open up to my members of my board. Member Downey, any questions or comments?
Can can you hear me, first of all?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I switched over to my phone. I was getting a bad internet connection. I don't have any questions or comments. I just want to make sure I understand that the the conditions that came out today, Melissa, the ones in red are the ones from the applicant. Is that those are comments from the applicant? Is that?
Um, the conditions in red are the conditions that were modified based on my discussions with Attorney Goldstein. I just didn't want you to try to figure out where the revisions were. So the only thing that changed from those discussions is what is highlighted in red. Member Downey?
Okay, very good. Now, this these all look good. I have no comments or questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Downey. Member McCamey, any questions or comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would just like to say that I appreciate the fact that the applicant and the team you know, worked with the staff. And I appreciate Attorney Goldstein saying that, you know, the improvements that they made, he felt that they were going to benefit everybody. That's that's, you know, the goal of our review of these projects. So I appreciate that. And, you know, some of these sites are challenging. If we were going to start all over on a white piece of paper, we wouldn't put some of these buildings where they are and how they're angled and so on and so forth. So that's why we we try to improve them when we can, you know, to everybody's benefit. So I just start off, I know there was some chatter about the parking. I just want to make sure, Melissa, the parking is all set. It's going to be it's set as the engineer and the architect, I can see it, had laid out. There was something about employee parking versus customer parking. Is that still going to remain or is it all just going to be open parking for employees and customers?
If I may, through the chair to Member McCamey. The applicant has provided the plan you see here on the screen. The zoning requirements for the use proposed at this location is twenty-two-point-four spaces. We'll call it twenty-three. They've striped twenty-four spaces. Did have some discussions with Attorney Goldstein regarding those spaces. The conditions and stipulations regarding the parking regulate the required spaces, which would be twenty-three. What the conditions discuss in reference is a preference to have the employees parked on that side of the building. Those nine spaces, I guess that would be the east side of the building and to leave the spaces out in front for the customers. Also discussed was that loading would take place in the loading area for product and supply and things that they'll be selling out of the warehouse. Things like FedEx and UPS, they can come in the front on the on the western side in the handicap area, pull in in front of that area, make their deliveries and then leave the site. As long as they're on site, we have no problem with smaller vans and things like that using the main entrance to make, you know, WB Mason, something like that. Something else that we discussed was in the event that the applicant decided to multi-tenant the building and carve out a small portion in the back. They don't have plans to do that now. Their attorney was was thinking ahead, which is always helpful. And if that would have happened and the building was subdivided and a new entrance and or main entrance to a secondary user was provided here, then those nine parking spaces would be for that tenant in in that particular location. Obviously, they need to still comply with the number of parking required for the uses. But an entrance wouldn't would would employ a potential handicap space on that side and different things. So a one-tenant building, we're going to have customers in the front and employees on the side. Two-tenant building, obviously, is going to need to be some some revisions to to that layout in order to comply with the ADA requirements and to have sort of those uses somewhat separate on the site.
So if they if they did sub-tenant, is that subject to a major or minor modification? Or is that covered under this condition?
I think I think it depends. I talked to Attorney Goldstein about that, too. So they're showing X amount of of showroom. I believe it's twenty-six hundred right now. The building's twenty-two thousand and change. The showroom definition says that the showroom can't be more than twenty-five percent of the of the back room, we'll call it, the warehouse portion. So we talked about the requirement to maintain those ratios. But let's say they kept the showroom at twenty-six hundred and their warehouse only needed to be, say, ten thousand, and they put a warehouse tenant in the back. A warehouse is a warehouse and the parking is compliant. We wouldn't be looking at something like that. So if something went in there that required more parking was in conflict with some of these conditions, required a use permit, those are the types of things that would be coming back to the board. This isn't an industrial location and these parks are filled with industrial uses. So something like manufacturing or warehousing, we probably wouldn't see. Other uses that had further implications in regards to varying from the zoning requirements and or creating some kind of conflict with the findings and the conditions, then we would weigh, is this going to be major or minor?
Okay, and just along those same lines, if additional parking was needed, where would that where would it go?
That's a good question. I but that I haven't I haven't gotten into yet. They would probably not on this site unless they got rid of the loading or something like that. They're adding some green space and they're improving the open space coverage. So if they wanted to then go back and add more parking, they'd be looking at looking at a variance if they didn't do some some major configuring. I think one assurance to the board is is that, you know, warehouse, manufacturing, those commercial type uses, which are most likely what you would see here. The parking that is provided will continue to work and continue to comply with the ordinance. And then as I had, as I had said to, you know, Attorney Goldstein today, you know, there's only so much that we can answer at this point. You know, when and if something like that, you know, was proposed, a major change or a major change in the parking use, we would need to to look at that a little further.
Okay, and just along those same lines, you know, again, not to over anticipate what might could have could happen. So Attorney Goldstein, if if this plan gets accepted, will there be a transfer of ownership to your clients from the from the current owners?
That's the intention, yes. Of course, it's not it's not done until it's done, obviously. That's every conveyancer knows that. But but yes, we're under contract and and we have a couple of conditions to to clear, and this is one of them.
Sure, okay. So you can you can appreciate, you know, I was just trying to look forward. This isn't the first time these types of things have happened or additional changes to the buildings have been been made. And again, I I appreciate the improvements in the drainage and the lot coverage, the landscaping. Again, I think it's it's to everybody's benefit. So thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm all set.
Thank you, Member McComey. Member Grove, any comments?
No, sir.
And just for myself, so what was the difference in parking from I'm going to call it option one, which was the last meeting to this option that's here. It looks like there there was an increase in parking, which now meets the minimum that we have to have.
I can't recall what our first parking total is. Jonathan might know, but you know, our initial impression was we didn't need as much parking as the bylaw required, and we favored trying to provide more permeable space instead. But but this is a a good balanced compromise.
No, no, I definitely agree with all the landscaping plateaus here. And then the parking kind of ties in nicely with the dynamic of the current building being on an angle and kind of tapering things a bit with the parking. So I appreciate the effort you guys took to kind of beautify kind of a quirky little lot you have going on here. Especially the drainage, too, is also big that your roof drainage plus your site drainage is going into a common area. So that's pretty much all the questions from me. Everything looks okay on my end. Is there any correspondence I should be taking in, Melissa?
Um, Mr. Chairman, we do have a correspondence list that was provided. I believe, let me just locate mine. Um, oops, I have it right here. I'm taking notes on it. I guess we have items one through thirty-five. And noting that for the purposes of demonstration, the plan that you have on your screen shows the layout and and all of the items that the planning board has raised concerns about. There are some revisions that are needed to the plan, but they're housekeeping things and additional details and information for clarification that the staff has asked be be put on those plans. And that's also in the draft conditions as well.
Okay, so same same idea here. I could do the three different motions, correspondence, public hearing, and then vote potentially, Melissa?
Yes, yes, please.
Before you do, Mr. Chairman, I just like to clarify with Ms. Ms. Santucci. Is the conditions, the version of the conditions, the last one we talked about with those green changes that I suggested, and you seem to be open to?
Yes, I did. And and I I apologize for not mentioning that Attorney Goldstein. Those were so minor. Attorney Goldstein added about three words to the conditions that I had printed in red. And again, nothing that is meaningful or impactful. Just purely clarification of himself and his client, and they are purchasing the building. And, you know, they haven't had an opportunity to experience our conditions. So again, those are a few words. He's adding one word to condition one, and he's adding some clarification to conditions thirty-four and thirty-five in regards to differentiating the required parking versus that one extra space. And then a little clarification around the employees based on what I had shared in response to Member McComey's question this evening.
Thank you. That's exactly what I was asking about.
Is is there a date for that draft condition that we can reference at this meeting? So we were all on the same page, Melissa, or is it something that if you reference draft conditions, we're on the same page that it will be with Mr. Goldstein's changes?
I think the way you just framed it should maybe be the motion, Member Baker. The revised conditions dated December eighth with revisions to condition one thirty-four and thirty-five for Attorney Goldstein.
Yeah, you can say it's per my email of four thirty-two PM if you want. If we want to get precise.
Okay, so I'll take a motion to enter in the correspondence.
So moved.
There a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, Member McComey?
Yes.
Member Grove?
Yes.
Member Downey?
Yes.
And myself, yes. So second motion would be to close the public hearing on this agenda item.
It's so moved by Downey.
Second by Grove.
So roll call, Member McComey?
Yes.
Member Grove?
Yes.
Member Downey?
Yes.
And myself, yes.
Thank you, Boyd. Much appreciated. Happy holidays. Don't go yet. Okay, I'm not going.
All this too soon.
Well, thank you in a second.
To approve with the draft or the email at four thirty-two PM from Mr. Goldstein and dated December eighth thousand twenty?
Yeah, motion is so moved.
Second by Grove.
Okay, roll call, Member McComey?
Yes.
Member Grove?
Yes.
Member Downey?
Yes.
And myself, yes. All right, I appreciate it, gentlemen.
Thank you again. Appreciate it. Happy holidays to all of you.
Happy holidays.
Thank you. Next one up is Aaron back on for this one, Melissa, for the Quincy Ave, or is I know she's off for Arnold Street, right?
She is back on for the continuance.
Okay, for Quincy Ave?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, so we have three forty-five to three ninety-five Quincy Avenue PV file twenty dash oh one scheduled for the continued public hearing to begin at six thirty.
I'm, Madam Chairman, if I may, I have spoken to Attorney Mike Leon, who represents Sitco. Given the changes in staffing in the the caseload, he has agreed to a continuance to January. I'm going to be meeting with him and his engineer next week to bring myself up to speed on the plan and make sure that the items that have been discussed recently by the planning board and by the staff have been addressed. So we have a continuance signed till January twelfth, twenty twenty-one. Scary saying that, but six thirty PM, Madam Chair.
All right, so we'll need a motion to continue the three forty-five to three ninety-five Quincy Avenue. Sitco Petroleum Corporation is the applicant to January twelfth, twenty twenty-one at six thirty. Does do we have a motion to continue?
So moved.
All right. Downey, one second.
We have a motion by Member Grove and a second by Member Downey to continue this matter to January twelfth. I'll do roll call vote, Member McComey?
Yes.
Member Baker?
Yes.
Member Downey?
Yes.
Member Grove?
Yes.
And myself, yes. And I have us right at seven o'clock, which is good timing because the next public hearing is a continued public hearing for eight through ten and forty Arnold Street to begin at seven o'clock. And Member Baker, you can take over.
All right, thank you. Okay, we want to open the public hearing for eight to ten and forty Arnold Street, Plenum File Number twenty zero two. It's special permits and site plan review, and the applicant is Adams Street Enterprises LLC. Anything I should be bringing in, Melissa, to open up this public hearing, or should I send over to the applicant to start their presentation?
Mr. Chairman, if I can very briefly, the planning staff, conservation staff, and a peer review consultant have been having some very productive meetings with the applicant and their team. As we can see here by the by the tiles, it's an extensive team and an extensive project. The applicant at this point has not completed the final drainage design. We're going to be circling back to that subject hopefully next week and regrouping and having another Zoom meeting. Also with our peer review consultant, Phil Paradise. And what I've asked the applicant to do this evening, we have their full team. We also have Andrew Arseneault, their traffic consultant, and our peer consultant, Greg Lucas, who's been working with myself and the town engineer on the traffic. I know there's been some questions from some of the board members, also some members of the public. There were some initial discussions around the traffic. There was quite a bit of feedback from our peer consultant, myself, and the town engineer. They quickly got right back to work and responded to those. And frankly, what they have put together and are able to share with the board and the public this evening is a very responsive and what is, in my opinion, a very appropriate traffic mitigation package that I think the community will find welcoming and and again, very responsive and responsible. So this evening will be focused around traffic and just can turn it over to the applicant. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. So I'll turn it over to the applicant. Mr. Palmucci, I think you'll be presenting.
Yes, good evening, Chairman, temporary chairman Baker and members of the planning board. We're here before you again on the the Adam Street project. As Melissa said, this is a it's a really large site with a lot of with a lot of difficult aspects to it because it's such a large site, the drainage has been challenging as well as the environmental concerns that only further to further complicate that. So we're continuing to work on that. We're we're currently working on the latest revisions based on the peer review input that we received, I think, last week and after meeting with with staff last week. So we're working on that. We anticipate that at your next meeting, we'd be able to present some more final plans relative to to drainage. We thought we would take this opportunity this evening to to discuss traffic with you as we believe we are. We have that pretty well buttoned up and want to get the board's input and and feedback on that. With us tonight, we have Andrew Arseneault from who is our traffic engineer from Van Assen Associates. And he'll be going through what our most what our most current plan for traffic mitigation at the site is in our most recent, which incorporate our most recent responses to the peer review. So if I could, I'd like to turn it over to Andrew.
Good evening. May I have a may I share my screen?
Yes, Melissa.
Hi, yes, you may, Andrew. Thank you.
Sure. Good evening. I'm Andrew Arseneault from Van Assen Associates, where the transportation engineers for the Riverside Business Park. Over the past months, as mentioned, we've been working with the town and the peer reviewers. We've addressed the technical aspects of the project, and tonight I just want to briefly walk through the off-site mitigation measures that we've developed. The first off-site locations are actually along the Elm Street corridor, including Elm Street at Church, Elm at Middle, and Elm at Adams, Hawthorne, and Old Elm. For these intersections, we're going to conduct a post-occupancy monitoring program within six months of reaching a sixty percent occupancy. And again, within six months of reaching full occupancy. Based on those volumes, we'll analyze them, and if there's any operational deficiencies, it will design and implement improved traffic signal, timing, and phasing plans at them. We also performed an ADA inventory at the Elm at Middle and Elm at Adams, Hawthorne, Old Elm intersections. And we came up with a list of items needing improvement. We're also going to provide interconnection capabilities between these intersections. We've come up with a design which will implement to help improve the geometry at the commercial at Adams Street intersection. We're going to bring it to a ninety-degree tee up tee up that intersection to get rid of that that skewed Y approach that Adams currently has. We'll also implement ADA compliant wheelchair ramps and sidewalks at this location. We investigated installing a rapid rectangular flashing beacon at the Middle Street at River Street intersection. Initially, we had thought about moving the crosswalk from the south leg of that intersection just to maximize the the solar capabilities for the RFB. But based on some feedback we received, we decided not to relocate it, and instead we'll just work off of AC power if necessary. In any event, we will be providing a flashing beacon at this intersection. And lastly, we offered some suggestions along the Elm, the Adam Street corridor to reduce speeds and increase connectivity to the playground. Again, based on some feedback, we decided to provide some form of restriping to accommodate on-road bicycling features where it's safe and to provide a curb bump out along Adams Street at a location that makes sense. We had proposed some vertical features, but as requested, we'll take those out as they're not desirable for the stretch of Adams. With that, I'd like to turn it back over to the board for any comments or questions that they may have.
All right, thank you. We'll open up to the public. If there's any person raising their hand who wants to speak at tonight's meeting?
Let me take a look, Mr. Chairman.
And is there any emails or correspondence we should be bringing in for letters from any butters or anybody?
I don't have any. I don't have any correspondence this evening to share. I didn't issue the correspondence list. There is quite a bit of materials in there. We're going back and forth. I'll finalize that when we get closer to the the final evening of the hearing. There has been some questions from the district council, and we're putting together some responses in response to those questions. Some of them may be answered here this evening as well. There is one hand up, Michael Riley. You Yep, you're all set, Mr. Riley.
Thank you. And Mr. Arseneault, we we had spoken on one of these previous pieces, and I just saw the quick overview of the Adam Street, and I haven't been able to the Adam Street Commercial Street intersection. I did not see in that in that quick picture if there were new crosswalks to be added there or not, and that's a major concern as we've all brought up before. Thank you.
Andrew, can you put that slide up back up maybe and?
Yeah, let me, um. Yes.
Take your time.
Bear with me. Can everybody see that setup?
Yep.
And we can zoom in a little bit, just on kind of the area.
Yeah, let me see if I.
Yeah, thank you.
There we go.
There we go. Yep.
So we would be providing ADA wheelchair ramps along the Adam Street leg and and a marked crosswalk.
Okay, and there would still be a need for a crosswalk across Commercial Street there at some point?
We could look into, yes, we can look into putting a maybe across the north leg. Looks to be about the
Yeah, there it can because right now from the railroad tracks all the way up, there is there is a there is a crosswalk just beyond where you just had your arrow. There's a lighted crosswalk. You know, the there may not be a need for a crosswalk further down.
Okay.
But any crosswalks that go in there are going to need to be the new kind with the the lights and flashers and all that fun stuff.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else raising their hand, Melissa?
Um, let me check. Doesn't look like anyone has their hand up. Let me just check the chat.
Thank you.
And I see nothing on the chat and no emails to Connor either.
Okay, so I'll open it up to the board for questions and comments. Start with Member McComey. Any questions or comments?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm sure as Attorney Palmucci knows and the rest of us know, traffic is one of the top problems that we have in the South Shore. traffic is one of the top problems that we have in the South Shore. And it gets everybody highly emotional. So I'm glad we're spending a lot of time on it. I'm glad we have a peer review on it. And we need to look at this every which way that we possibly can. Because even with some of the mitigation that's proposed, which looks good, you know, once the traffic hits, people are going to forget all about that. So I have a couple of questions related to all this. The first is the school buses which are currently over in that area. I don't know if they're coming off that property, but I assume that they're not going to be there anymore. Is that correct?
The school buses are are actually not on the property. It's a separate lot owned by another individual. And I don't know how much they use Arnold Street because I think they also have a separate means of of access to that site. But theoretically, theoretically, they would still have access to Arnold Street after the project was opened and occupied.
Okay, they they actively use Arnold Street. So I guess, you know, that's, that's one factor. One of the things, obviously, as you know, Attorney Palmucci, you can't, hopefully the kids are eventually going to go back to school. We're going to have the school buses rolling. So just something to keep in mind, we've had other areas with similar, similar issues. We we can't slow the school buses down. So that's, that's my thought on there. Another issue is I know we're going to have contractors in this area. And I guess I'm asking, to what extent are we going to limit the size of trucks that are allowed? We just, as you know, Attorney Palmucci, we just did another project for one of your other clients, which involve large vehicles. This one potentially could have a lot of large vehicles. So I guess my question is, are we going to restrict the size of trucks in this facility?
So that's, that's an interesting question that you raised and I'm just trying to think about it. I, given the nature of this site, I would suggest no, but obviously we'd be willing to to look into it based on your, the concern you're raising. And the reason why I would suggest no is because a large portion of this site is going to be designated warehouse space. So I think if we were to limit the size of trucks accessing the site, we would really be severely limiting the type of uses that we could put in there at a warehouse. I mean, I would anticipate some larger trucks. Again, depending on the the end user, which we don't have an end user, but we're talking about tens of thousands of square feet of warehouse space. So as it relates to the warehouse space, I don't think a restriction would be appropriate. Again, I defer to the judgment of the board. But in terms of the concern that I know that you have or that you're expressing that you've expressed before in other projects related to the contractor base, that's certainly something I think we could look into. And I I forget what our end result that satisfied the board in the last project was, but I'm certain we could probably reach the same conclusion here if we limited it to a certain class size of vehicles. Because we do anticipate it would be a very similar use to that project that you were speaking of, which is which was previously permitted by the board, which is a contractor use with the, with some office space, warehouse space. But a large, a very large portion of the site would be strictly warehouse space. So that would require larger vehicles to to accommodate that use.
Sure, no, I understand. And this is, this is going to be many multiples of that other project. So I I would just, I just like some thought and consideration. I mean, look, we're looking at volume, number one, obviously, in terms of numbers of vehicles. And then secondly, what I'm suggesting, of course, is the size of the vehicle, which has its own challenges, you know, in terms of the traffic and so on. So just some consideration of those things. You know, I'm not the expert, but I think we have a lot of smart minds here. Maybe we could think some more about it. So another issue which I heard just come up and kind of fits in with some of my thoughts is as the, let's assume that the project goes, you start to fill it up. At what points are we going to monitor? I heard 60%. That seems very high to me. It seems to me that we should be monitoring it maybe every 10% increment or whatever, some much smaller number and pay very careful attention to what's going on in the traffic, waiting till we're 60% kind of, you know, up the glasses already more than half full and it could tip over. So what I'm suggesting is, and I don't know what the right plan is, but much more lower thresholds of testing and certainly many more increments, maybe every 10% or so, whatever. Because, you know, that area right there with all the intersections we just went through has a lot of pinch points, has a lot of potential to slow down. So a, a, again, I'm just, I'm throwing that out there particularly for Melissa and in our peer review and in the traffic consultants to think about what makes much more reasonable sense to monitor the traffic as, you know, occupancy increases. And then that leads to another point, which is if we have, if we have a problem, you know, 40%, 50% capacity at the site, then what are we going to do? So, you know, I don't know if anybody has any responses to, then what are we going to do? But my other question is, you know, looking down the future, what happens if you're 80% occupied or whatever and we have issues? Now what do we do? So what, what is, what's our plan to fix things and to get ahead of them before they get, before they get out of control?
Are you asking me to answer that right now?
Well, I'm, I'm asking, I'm asking all the, I'm asking all your experts to think about it. And maybe you want to come up with some thoughts for us because, as you know, we, we, we I'm, I'm scared of the traffic. I'm, I'm, I'll just be blunt with you. I'm scared of the volume and I'm scared of the size of the vehicles that could be there. And I'm scared of the possibility. And I just, just like anything else, you can't wait till you have a problem to try to solve it. So what I'm asking is, how are we going to proceed in a reasonable manner in terms of monitoring? How are we going to react and 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 what are we going to do? I mean, you know, I, I understand you want to fill it up. But I also understand that we can't slow it down at the same time, right, for everybody. So I'm, I don't know if we have an answer. I don't think we have an answer tonight. But I, you know, I'm raising the issue. So I'm, I'm, I think I'm worried with a reason. And I, I think we just need to, you know, let, let us react to whatever you think your plan might be. And I'm, I'm offering you, you know, again, this is just my opinions. I don't know what the other board members think. I don't know what Melissa thinks, the staff thinks, but that's my perspective for for this evening.
And I appreciate that. I mean, obviously, we're dealing with a very large site, potentially a lot of increase, a significant increase in volume from the site in an already very congested, historically congested area. So I appreciate members' concern and I will certainly come up with a better answer than anything I could give you tonight with our team for the next meeting.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. McCamey. Member Downey, any comments?
Yes, I know it's, it's not traffic related, but one thing I'd like to say, having driven down to the site, the former cement mixing facility that's there, is that what that is? You can drive right, at least up until last week, you could drive right up to it and probably, I didn't try, but you could probably access it. So that's something that's a concern, a safety concern of mine, having kids that live in the neighborhood. I've heard about kids going down there and exploring, and that's what we call in the law an attractive nuisance. So I'd like the developer or the owner to, if he hasn't already done so, to take some precautions there. Is that Attorney Palamucci, can you?
Yep, we'll take care of that. Absolutely.
Okay, I know it's not traffic related, but it's definitely concerning. So I do want to talk about traffic. Some of the numbers I see, as, as Mema McCamey said, are disturbing. You're talking about 800% to 1,000% increase with some of your numbers in traffic on Adams to Elm. That's really mind blowing, some of these numbers, when you look at pre-COVID, what the traffic was like down there. It's gridlock at certain parts of the day and you're talking about adding 950 vehicles to that. Big vehicles that are slower getting off out of that facility. So I see in one of your correspondence dated December 3rd from Vanessa and Associates, Vanessa, I'm not sure if I'm pronouncing that correctly, that the traffic impact would exceed 15% on Elm and Arnold. And the project includes specific improvements that will offset the predicted impact. And I haven't, in the documents I reviewed and what I've heard so far, I don't know that that, I've seen that. Other than the 60% that Mema McCamey mentioned, when it's 60% full, there'll be a further assessment. I, I've talked to the, the traffic engineer for Braintree in the past about that intersection before you folks were even before us and we talked about changing the greens signal, lengthening or shortening the green signal. And he said, well, you pay on the other end. His answer was you pay on the other end. The traffic gets worse on the other side of the traffic light where they have the green or don't have the green. So essentially his answer was we, that's not a solution, is changing the lengths of the green light. So I, I'd like to hear, you know, a better, a better plan for Elm Street in and and Arnold, as far as, I mean, Adam Street, sorry, as far as alleviating traffic or at least letting traffic flow because Hawthorne does not allow commercial vehicles. There's a sign down there often ignored that commercial vehicles cannot come down. So what, they have to go either left on the Elm or right onto Elm. However, that creates a backlog of non-commercial vehicles that want to get to where they're going and they're upset that they were waiting at a light. So that we get the brunt of that, you know, non-commercial traffic during rush hour. We can see Hawthorne Road, we're talking pre-COVID from end to end blocked with cars some nights, five o'clock. So along that vein, remember McCamey was asking about the size of vehicles. Has been, there been a discussion, Attorney Palamucci or anyone else about the hours of operation? Is that in the material? I didn't see it.
We can, we can speak to, I think Andrew can best speak to that question as well as your, your prior question comment about the traffic if you want.
Yeah, that would be great.
Okay, Andrew, could you address the members' questions concerned about the traffic volume, the 15% in the the mitigation measures at that intersection?
Sure, absolutely. Thank you, Chairman Downey.
Andrew, could you just also speak to what if any accounting you take in your process for predicting traffic flows and volume? The size of trucks, how that, how that plays into your analysis?
No, absolutely. And just to tackle the, the trucks because I know it's a, I know it's a major concern. So we did work with, with the peer review consultant and we, we did run the generation just for the trucks themselves. Off the top of my head, we were between 1 and 3% of the total traffic would comprise of trucks, which is in line with what a, with what the standard roadway would experience, around 2%. And one thing that we found with the heavy vehicles was that they mostly occur off of the peak commuter hours, the 7 to 9 AM and, and periods. They, they typically kind of work around getting out of the rush hour from the, the statistics that we looked at. The 15% threshold is exceeded during the PM peak hour heading west along Adam Street, coming off of Arnold, making that left off of there. We did, we could tip over the 15% threshold at that, at that location. For the daily and the AM peak hour, we're, we're under the 15% in all instances. We've looked at some of the mitigation measures of optimizing the signals along the Elm Street corridor, interconnecting the signals along the Elm Street corridor and coming up with the ADA improvements at those intersections, which will help all users to navigate the, navigate the intersection safer. I'm not sure, as I remember Downey, was I, was I missing another bullet point that you had brought up?
Well, I just, you know, what, what plans are in place or remember McCamey brought this up as far as, you know, mitigating that light as far as extending the red time or shortening the green time, things like that, that would improve. If you discovered any that would, if there are any, that would improve flow. Based on my discussions with the traffic engineer in the past, he wasn't very optimistic about that.
No, and I agree with, I, I understand what he's saying. There's only so much you can do to retime it. Why we chose the 60%, that's, that's a typical threshold that we would use at any larger project. And that gets kind of a real world number of, we can only estimate so well, we, we base it on similar sites, appropriate locations. There's only so good that you can get with, with generating traffic volumes. So the 60% occupancy sort of tells you before it gets to the full occupancy what that specific site will actually generate. And why we do that is to, is to, to see if there is anything that would come up at the 100% that, that we could cut off before it gets there. With the retiming, we, we we should improve operations out there. I believe we were, I don't have the exact number offhand, but I believe we were, we were either I believe we're at a level of service D, which is an acceptable the, the threshold for, for an acceptable operations. Let me, bear with me one moment as I just pull it up.
Mr. Chairman, I just also want to remind you and the board that we have Greg Lucas here, our peer consultant. And it might be helpful to also hear a little bit from him on some of these issues as John Thompson, our current town engineer. Myself and Greg have spent quite a bit of time looking at these matters as well.
Okay.
I did just check with our mitigated improvements, we are predicting an improvement to a level of service D, which is the generally considered the acceptable threshold.
Yeah, I'd be glad, Melissa, I'd be glad to offer opinion on some of those specific points for the benefit of the board. You know, talking about thresholds and, and mitigation thresholds, the, the traffic volumes, the base traffic volumes are, and as is typical in, in industry standard, are taken in one day in time. And so it's not precise enough to account for a 10% increase from a site. The site is expected to generate peak numbers of looking at the original or looking at the revised, the responses from November 9th. There were 162 trips in the morning peak hour, 184. That's both entering and exiting the site and then those are distributed across the network. As we distribute those through the network, it's, it's compared to the amount of existing traffic, it's a relatively small percentage. And that could easily be discovered in a daily, in the discrepancy in a day-to-day count without the site even being considered. So that's why we look at larger development points, something like a 60%, a 50%, a 60% gives us a picture of what this is really doing. You know, realistically, a handful of vehicles will be absorbed without anyone noticing in a congested network. So we need to get bigger than a handful and that's why a threshold like 60% is logical. As far as the retiming plans that, that were analyzed by Vanessa Associates as part of their initial study and generate level service D, as Andrew just talked about, to, to remember Downey's point, the, the previous timing, and we've seen this in working the, the previous timing, and we've seen this in working with the new town engineer and other signals in town as well. There's a lot of timing plans, signal timing plans in town that are based upon timing, you know, volume counts that were done years and years and years ago. And so there is almost always benefit in renewing that timing plan based on current data, even with, again, even without the impact of the site, there's benefit in retiming this. And so the mitigation that they're proposing to develop new timing, potentially new phasing of that, of the Elm Street corridor and to connect wirelessly to provide a connection between the Church Street intersection, the Middle Street and the Adam Street intersection so that they can be coordinated, so that they can talk to one another, would be a benefit to the corridor. So our expectation is that these things would show improvement, and these are, you know, logical mitigations based on the impact realized by the site.
And and that's, that's, that's great. But I guess, am I correct in understanding that this will not be assessed, that that process will not be assessed until sixty percent occupancy has occurred?
That's the current plan, is that it would be triggered by, by an increase shown at sixty percent occupancy.
I guess to to remember McComme's earlier point, is that's, and maybe that's something we can talk about further. Is that something you you're waiting for, you know, sixty percent's going to increase traffic there by four hundred and something percent of a really congested area. So I mean, why are we waiting, you know, for Armageddon to come before we address it? So that that's, you know, maybe we can talk about that further, but and I also asked about the hours of operation. Are they addressed in any of this material?
Again, to speak, speak to the point that that Andrew made, that we would expect truck traffic to occur at off-peak periods. It's going to be better access for them to the site outside of the peak periods. That can be, that can be, that can be restricted by condition.
That's what I'm
But typically, we would, we would expect anyway that that you're not going to see the impact of the trucks in the peak periods. The site's peak is typically during the day outside of the commuter peaks.
Okay. Okay, and there was a, an attorney Palamucci, you may be able to address this. I just want to make sure the older material from November addressed the traffic increase on Arnold Street, and that has since been corrected. Is that right to Elm or Adam Street, sorry?
I believe so. Andrew, can you, can you speak to that?
Sure, we in in Mr. Downey, you're, you're speaking to the the percentage of traffic increase along Adam Street?
Yeah, I don't think it's, because Arnold is, there's not much traffic on it.
No, and and why we chose Adam Street was because Arnold is, it's a dead-end street. It's essentially a driveway for the site itself. So taking any kind of measures there, you wouldn't, you wouldn't see the true impact to the neighborhood. We chose Adam Street because it is, it promotes through traffic. There is, that's where you can actually see where any impact would be.
Okay. Okay. So I guess if we can revisit this, the the traffic signal issue and probably the hours of operation, I, you know, going forward, if we're not going to talk about it further tonight, but I'm happy to, but those are my, my issues of concern at the moment.
May I inquire respectfully, member Downey, the concern about hours of operation? I don't think we, I don't think we've in any of our submitted materials who specified what we anticipate hours of operation to be, which we can work on. I think we're more assuming to be normal business hours. But if I can inquire further so that we can better prepare a response for next meeting, is there a specific concern about the timing? What, what should we be trying to address there?
Well, I guess the, 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 the peak hours, right, for at least, and this is not scientific, but my own observation, seven AM to nine AM seem to be the, the worst times to drive down there in the morning. And then, you know, four to seven, probably in the evening, something like that. So, you know, something to just consider, we've done in the past, we've talked about hours of operation for other projects. And, you know, I know it's, it's, it's a delicate balance between business and accommodating the community. But it's something that we should definitely give some consideration to.
Thank you.
Any more questions, member Downey?
No, no.
And I'll pass over to member Grove.
Yes, sir. Thank you. To member Downey's comments on the hours of operation, the other impact is the noise from the large vehicles. You do have residential areas on all sides of that property that you'll be traversing to exit. Mr. Lucas?
Yes, sir.
In, in terms of the control of it's, you're going to have a single controller for multiple intersections?
So today, it would be the same controllers that exist today. There's a single controller for the Elm at Middle and Elm at Adams and Hawthorne intersections, and then a separate controller at Elm and Church.
So all you're doing is linking them.
You're linking them so that they can talk to one another and have plans that help promote flow along Elm Street.
Well, are there more or developed controls that allow you to change your signalization depending on the hours of the day?
And truth be told, there has, that sort of functionality is pretty basic and could be, could be done with the controller that's there today. That's, that's something that's always been, for as long as I've been in the industry for twenty-plus years, that's always been a capability of of the traffic signal controller.
Well, it seems to be ignored a lot of times.
Well, and again, as I was, as I was saying earlier, there are a lot of old, you know, we've just started to do some work with John Thompson, the town engineer, and there are some, some old equipment and old timing plans in place in the town.
Okay. What are the baseline traffic counts? When were they taken? Do you know?
Andrew, can you, do you know that off the top of your head?
I do know that, and if I may just step back really quickly to the, to the equipment. We are proposing to update, update and modernize all that equipment. It's, it's about, if I had to guess, fifteen years old, give or take fifteen to twenty years old. So there is new equipment, new fresh equipment that we'll put in there that won't necessarily have a day-to-day impact, but it will
Right.
make things easier. The counts were performed pre-COVID, they were conducted on September, mid-September of two thousand and nineteen.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that the, yeah, and we're still working off of those, okay. I agree with the past two gentlemen in the terms of increasing the the analysis of the development as it proceeds. One of the things I think you may need to have some discussion on is phase development itself so that you don't get hooked into a lot of expense and then end up finding out the roadway's failing. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, member Grove. To kind of piggyback on some of the items we addressed at in the last couple of comments, same thing, actually, to kind of piggyback to start with member Grove is, is the issue you're going to have is that if you get into the sixty percent, you start kind of looking at it as, well, what is it now? Is it already over congested? It's tough to backtrack if you're already into a building. So it's either, A, you do a phased development where you do building by building and see how they go. Or is the development itself too large for the parcel? And you do a smaller building to offset the fact that you have an increase of traffic. I I live on Cedar Street, Mr. Downey lives on Hawthorne. I know McComme's right at the street where we're all residents, we all deal with this every day. Elm, Adams, Hawthorne, they're, they're very, very congested. You know, doing the, the new signaling is a great fix, obviously, it'll definitely will help. But if you have in so many cars, how, how, you know, great can you do with the lights to make the cars really flow that much better if you're having that much of an influx of cars on the peak, peak time? I think to get back to member Downey's point, you know, to see the, the times you're in and out would be a good item. And just me, like, I try, I know you probably have done trip generations. I'm kind of curious of, I understand you can't really figure out if, what type of trucks you're putting in here. But it would be good to see, like, is a, what's the largest size truck? Is potentially going to be there, and then the smalls would be a sedan, obviously. But I'm curious, is it, you know, how, how big is the biggest truck you can put in here? And then how is that impacting the, the kind of, your kind of backtrack and how does impact the traffic, you know, down the street? So, you know, time
To address that now, if you want him to, or if you want us to. I, I think Andrew can speak to some of the size of the vehicles based on the calculations. And I would also just note that there are, there's a heavy industrial use on Arnold Street already. There is significant traffic from school buses, as member McComme noted, also tractor trailers, the, the gas, the gas trucks, the tanker trucks. I can, as it relates to some of the other kind of ancillary issues related to truck traffic that, I don't remember which member brought it up, perhaps member Downey. But I can, I can assure the board that we will be less intrusive to neighbors than the current use there, which the existing use there, which has been the cement plant. The, so the noise, the, the, you know, obviously, there won't be any as much dust and debris in the air, things like that. It'll be a much, a much more, lack of a better word, civilized use on the site that neighbors can co, your residential neighbors can coexist with. And I think that's why.
Absolutely.
Yeah. I mean, I think you can, I, I think you can, you can also glean some of that from, you know, we've done community, done community meetings on this project, and you don't have a strong neighborhood opposition from the immediate abutters, residents abutting. And we, we talked to them on an individual basis, on a, on a regular basis, when they stuff going on at the site or they have questions about the project. So I, I think it'll be, I think it'll be an improvement in terms of impact to the residential areas. And we're talking about the traffic, and I appreciate the concern. But if, Andrew, you could answer member Baker's question about the size of vehicles that we would project, number and size?
Sure. So without having the, the exact tenant, it, it would be a little bit difficult to say the exact size. I would say for a warehouse, you would, you would get a tractor trailer, a semi tractor trailer. As far as the numbers, bear with me as I just pull this up. The number of heavy vehicles, and this is based on the mix of uses was we were generating during the peak hours themselves approximately five total entering and exiting during the peak hours and about a hundred, a hundred and twenty over the course of the full day. Both entering and exiting.
When you say peak hours, are you referring to standard hours or the site's peak hours?
The, the, the peak hours of the adjacent streetway. I can pull that time for you. I want to say it was seven fifteen to eight fifteen on the day that we took the counts and five to six. But that one particular, that one hour of the roadway network.
Okay. Yeah, so, so I guess the, the biggest thing I'm trying to get at is, you know, how, how much is too much and how little is too little? A lot of times, like in design, like you kind of, I'm not going to say you can do this, but you have to look at it as, well, how much is the maximum on a traffic? Do you want to put on the street? And I think maybe you backtrack into, okay, well, and if I know I want to increase it potentially X amount, you backtrack into, well, now I need a building X size, you know, so that you're not overburdening the neighborhood potentially. Right now, we're kind of designing a building as a, a large parcel and a large development and say, okay, well, we have this huge building, and here's our increase, and it's a lot, and we're trying to figure it out. I'm just thinking, is there another way to look at it as, you know, what, what's the comfortability factor of the neighborhoods, the adjacencies that we have? What is that number? If, maybe it'll be a number, and maybe we look at that, too. So there's, I'm just trying to throw something out there to figure out how do you kind of meander this tough site? You know, traffic's a huge issue in Braintree, so I was trying to make sure we do it the right way. And that's kind of my thoughts on the topic. I don't know if anyone on the board has any other thoughts as well in regards to that. No one does. Melissa, do you have any thoughts? And Connor?
Um, yeah, if I may, Mr. Chairman, I'd, I'd like to add a few things, and I, I really appreciate all the comments and questions this evening from, from the board and the applicant. And just kind of listening and, and thinking out loud and a couple of things that might be helpful or things that I've thought of as well. So we have this site, and we have approximately two hundred thousand square feet of commercial industrial space proposed. And when the traffic engineers go to the ITE books and they look up, you know, who's going to do what and how are they going to do it? It's based on that two hundred thousand square feet. This proposal has a somewhat different style and layout of that with a smaller base and also that larger building. One thing that I've noticed that distinguishes that larger building from some other larger buildings that we have in town is they're not putting in five, six, seven, eight, anywhere near that loading areas. I believe there's two loading bays on the large building, and then a smaller loading area and potentially a loading space for the smaller fifty thousand square foot building. So given what's provided to accommodate those tractor trailers, you know, if they were going to, if they had fifteen loading docks, then they could accommodate fifteen tractor trailers on that property at the same exact time. They, they can't accommodate that. There will be conditions of no stacking and idling and all of these types of things that create emissions and noise and nuisance to the neighborhood. So the plan is somewhat responsive to some of the things that I've heard this evening. And it might be helpful to, I can work with the peer review consultant and the applicant's traffic engineer to kind of look at some of those things and, and provide that with a little more clarity to some of the board members. Truck traffic was one of the first things that we, we identified as well and asked them to go and, and take a look at that. Things like limiting the number of trucks on site at one time is definitely something that, that's going to be in the conditions. This is not laid out to become a nuisance, nor is that the desire. But we want to make sure that what's being provided is, is responsible, given the use of the building and can accommodate some level of business that is acceptable with, with industry standards. I have a few other comments in regards to the monitoring and some of the comments from the planning board. I just want to inform the board that we typically don't even monitor to, sometimes we've done it at seventy-five percent, but a lot of our monitoring takes place at a hundred percent. And I can't forecast the future here, but every single monitoring exercise that's been done in the community has resulted in ten to twenty-five percent lower volumes than were projected in the ITE. So without knowing the exact user, maybe it's not going to be ten percent less or twenty-five, and maybe it's going to be two, or maybe it's going to be too over. But I, I tend to think that, and I, and no disrespect to any of the board members, just giving my professional opinion, that monitoring at like ten and twenty percent is, is just not, it's just not productive. If the board is concerned that sixty is too late, you know, we could look at something like fifty percent. But to our peers' point, we want something that's enough to be measurable so that we can then say, okay, you know, this much is doing this much, and if we continue in this pattern. Other things that could happen, and, and we can talk to Attorney Palamucci and George and his team, is I, I think they're going to build the front building first, which is going to be the more, the smaller contractor use building and hopefully secure one larger tenant for that back building. and hopefully secure one larger tenant for that back building. If we look at some monitoring figures and things are coming in on the high end, then that's going to implicate choice of tenant, I would say, in the back section of the site. So there's different things and listening to the board members this evening and their concerns, things that we can discuss. Like I said, with our peer team, town engineer and the applicant's team, I think that we can be creative and put in restrictions that in the event that things don't pan out in accordance with the traffic projections, that the planning board in fact has some recourse. And just like all our other decisions where we have required monitoring, you know, if you say there's going to be 100 cars and there's 150, you're right back in front of the planning board and, and you're discussing those things. So I think there's an opportunity to evaluate performance and to have some backup conditions and or plans in the event that things are not going along as scheduled. Again, I can't forecast the future, but I'm, I am comfortable with the analysis and the projections done by Van Ass. I am confident that they are looking at this and looking out for our protections as well and really trying to paint a worst-case scenario for us, that there are no, no surprises and that the community has a clear understanding of what the impact could be. Frankly, I, I would be surprised if they ever hit that level of, of traffic. That is something that, like I said, it's happened once here in Braintree and I don't, I don't even remember how long I've been here at this point, but because of the study that we do, because of the conditions, I think that there will be opportunity to review this at the appropriate times when it's meaningful and results in information that will be helpful going forward. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Melissa. I, I guess just to get back to Member Grove's point and to kind of piggyback on yourself, I guess if they get to the 60% and we already are approved to get the smaller contractor-based building first and the warehouse built second, if you're approving an overall plan, how does that react hypothetically if we go to the threshold quickly with the first building? Is the second building, the warehouse is already approved? How do you backtrack if hypothetically it became too much and too cumbersome for the area?
Well, I think that we can, I, I am tasked with, with providing some conditions to make sure that if they monitor at 60% and the, and they're already producing what they'd say at 100%, well, then we have a problem. So there's going to be, I anticipate pages of conditions related to traffic, pages related to mitigation and a page or two related to, if this happens, then you're right back here in front of the planning board with an alternate use for the rest of the site that doesn't generate that kind of traffic and or some substantial, substantial, far more reaching and far more cumbersome mitigation beyond what has been currently, currently proposed. So I think that when we get to that point, my work is, is definitely cut out for me in putting something together that provides a comfort level for the board members in order for them to, to be supportive of this proposal with this amount of traffic.
Okay, thank you, Melissa. And the only last, kind of, just a quick point, no, Melissa's a big fan of roundabouts, but just, you know, just looking at that, that was Adams to commercial, if it was ever thought about, just as a question. You know, I just never, I, I drive through there all the time. I don't know if that was ever prone to doing some sort of roundabout to kind of keep traffic flowing versus stopping and starting again, just as a question.
I didn't think about it. I don't know if the applicant had looked at that at all.
We, Melissa, if I may, or
Yeah.
we, we did look at it. It's really, it's not the best geometry at that site, the, the angles that commercial comes in at. You'd be giving up, I, we didn't want to give up any parkland. And on top of that, we didn't want to take anyone's front yard, any driveways along there. It, it's just, it's a really tight fit.
Okay, got, no, that's, that's great.
Mr. Chairman, can I just make another comment? I appreciate everybody's ideas. I, I think that, that is what I was trying to get across is, look, we have to plan for the worst-case scenario. And those of us who have driven through this area and drive through it, see the challenges today. So when you start to extrapolate the potential, you get worried. And I think I'm, I'm going to stay worried because, you know, I, I don't know what's going to happen. I worked in a business where we use lots of models and I, I've heard a lot of traffic models and sometimes reality changes those models. And that's all I'm suggesting is we need to stay on top of this thing and monitor it carefully. And the idea that was brought up tonight is, you know, what if we reach a saturation point at some point? You know, what happens? I know that changes the financial projections for this project, but you know, those are the types of things, I think we need to think of everything. And, and I think we need to be very careful. We just had a project at the high school, for example, where we had to increase the drainage by 50% after it was already reviewed by engineers and peer, a peer review, 50% increase. So, you know, everybody's got, you know, different ways of approaching it. I am by no means an expert on traffic or drainage, but you know, common sense tells, tells me, and I think you've heard it from the other members of the board, that again, we need to proceed carefully. We need to monitor as much as we can. I don't know what the right number is. And, and, and everyone needs to come up with their best ideas and quite frankly, be prepared if, if something happens and we need to make changes. So that happens in all these types of projects. This one, as the applicant has stated from day one, it's a very large area. I understand it. I know they've made significant investments in lots of ways, but we can't let, we can't be drowned in the traffic, among other things. And again, as many ideas as we can, let's prepare ourselves for, for, you know, dramatic circumstances in case they happen. And, you know, again, best ideas forward. So look forward to some more discussion and all these things. And I appreciate everybody's comments. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mayor McCamey. Anything else I need to bring into the discussion, Melissa? Or should we continue this matter to, was the January 12th meeting? Is that what it is?
I don't, I don't have anything else to add at this point. We do have the January 12th meeting. We also have the February meeting. I, I had spoken to Attorney Palmucci last week because we were going to have a board member absent in January. So if the board member that was going to be absent in January is not going to be absent in January, we can continue it to January or we can continue it to, to February.
Yeah, we, we can do January, Melissa.
January? Okay. If we're doing January, I will very quickly, Attorney Palmucci, do you think that you'll be ready for January? That, you know,
It was our hope to be ready for January regardless of whether we were going to be on the agenda. So I, I believe we can achieve that.
Okay, okay. So with that, we will, so we have one item on Jan, for January now.
Yeah, do you want to settle for a time like we have been doing?
Um, I, I, I don't, well, I don't. We, we did 6:30 for the last one because it was on the, on the extension form. So we'll, we'll start up around 6 o'clock and then I'd like to, we'll put this one on, does, does the board have a preference? Do they want to do this first or the, or do they want to do Sitco first? We might have one or two other small projects.
I'd recommend Sitco first.
Sitco first? Okay.
That's just my opinion.
Okay.
So Sitco is at 6:30. We'll do this one at 6:45. I, I wanted to get away from the times, but because we already put one at a time, but going forward, we're just going to put them all at the same time because if somebody continues or we want to go, you know, out of order, but we'll do this one for 6:45. And if we get some smaller things, I'll put those on earlier in the agenda.
Okay, that sounds great.
So that's 6:45 on January 12th, 2021.
Okay, so can I have a motion to continue this? The planning board file number?
Oh, I just, I just want to check and see quickly, Mr. Chairman, if there's any other public comment. I don't, I don't see anyone's hands up. And I don't see anything in the chat.
Okay. So I'll take a motion to continue this public hearing, Plan and Board File 2002 to the January 12th, 2021 at 6:45 PM.
Move, Grove.
Can I have a second?
Downey, second.
Roll call, vote, Mayor McCamey?
Yes.
Member Grove?
Yes.
Member Downey?
Yes.
And myself, yes. All right.
Thank you, members. We'll see you in January. Have a happy holiday. Thank you. Happy holidays.
Now, is it going to close the public hearing, Melissa?
I know, keep it open because we'll be back next month.
Okay, got it.
All right.
That concludes all the matters on the agenda, Mr. Chairman, for this evening.
Okay, great.
Motion to adjourn.
Yeah, second.
Roll call, vote, Mayor McCamey?
Yes.
Member Grove?
Yes.
Member Downey?
Yes.
Myself, yes.
I'm always the one that gives the motion to adjourn, have you noticed that?
Yes, we have.
Member Downey. Everyone likes that motion.
It's the hardest thing I said all night.
All right, thank you.
Have a good holiday, everybody.
Happy holidays.
Be well and be merry.
Yep, you as well.